...of 2022, or any additions or corrections, those minutes, if not, do I have a move to approve?
I move.
Second. Have a motion as second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the minutes are approved. Public Park and Recreation Board, Mayor Pro Tim Whitten.
Yes, sir, we have one vacancy, term begins December 19, 2022, and ends December 18, 2028. The incumbent, John Reese, has served two full terms. I would like to nominate Jennifer Stevens.
Second.
Have a motion as second for Jennifer Stevens, any comments or questions? Excellent nomination, I appreciate Jennifer's willingness to serve. Many of y'all remember she was with us for a short period of time, four months, taking Councilman Smith's place at the end of this recent term and did an excellent job, and I believe she'll do an excellent job on this board.
And I do want to make note that this is not the Advisory Board, this is just the Financial Conduit Board, and so they don't meet as often as the Recreation Advisory Board, so very different for those who are listening.
They meet as needed, correct?
Correct, and the board makes no policy, just purely a financial board.
Sure, which fits right into Jennifer's interest and vocation.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor of Jennifer Stevens, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and we will officially move forward with that later on in the agenda. Any other questions for tonight's agenda? I'd like to make one announcement, under the enabling legislation for our former government, being a Class VI city, on the Planning Commission, the mayor has a representative that serves for the mayor on the Planning Commission, and Jana Jaker has done a fantastic job serving as my representative on the Planning Commission. This month will be her final meeting on the Planning Commission, and she will be moving away from the city limits of Auburn as of January the first. I have asked Phil Chancellor to come back onto the Planning Commission, and he's agreed to do that, and so I'm just informing the council tonight and the community that Mr. Chancellor will be returning to the Planning Commission beginning on January the first, and I'm excited about his efforts and his work, and he will be the mayor's representative. Okay, all right, any questions tonight's agenda, anything for us, city manager?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a move to adjourn?
I move.
All right, we will adjourn to be the whole, and we will begin in just a few minutes. We'll call it a order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for December the 6th, 2022. Welcome, everybody, welcome everybody that is listening and watching tonight. With the roll call, Lindsay.
Adams.
Here.
Oblins.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitten.
Here.
Andrews.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. We will start tonight with the recognition of our employees for our Employee of the Month and our Service Awards. We're proud to introduce you to our December Employee of the Month for the City of Auburn, and I do have a memorandum here from Paul Register, the Executive Director of Public Safety, and our subject today is Tyler Bush, the Employee of the Month for the month of December. I am pleased to nominate firefighter Tyler Bush as the Employee of the Month for December 2022. Tyler began working for the City of Auburn as a student firefighter in August of 2015. He became a career firefighter in October of 2020 and has excelled in his job. Tyler has completed multiple fire certification courses while also completing his nursing degree at Auburn University. In addition to completing his assigned duties at a high level of efficiency, Tyler has assisted with multiple projects that have benefited the department. Tyler also created a PowerPoint presentation for the nursing students conducting rotations through the Auburn Fire Department as part of required clinical hours. Tyler has great leadership qualities. Tyler is regularly requested for assistance and is always willing to do what is needed to complete each task. He is a mentor for student firefighters and diligently passes his knowledge on to others. Tyler performs fire emergency calls with professionalism. His officers have come to rely on his ability to perform in stressful situations. He seeks to make the Auburn Fire Department and the City of Auburn better each day. It is because of Tyler's hard work, his dedication and dependability, that I nominate him as the Employee of the Month. Congratulations, ma'am. Congratulations to all those great employees, congratulations especially to Tyler for being our Employee of the Month, and we're just thankful for all of those employees, thankful for their time that they have spent here working for the City of Auburn. During the committee of the whole tonight, we appointed Jennifer Stevens to the Public Parks and Recreation Board, and we announced, I announced tonight, that Mr. Phil Chancellor will be returning to the Planning Commission as the mayor's appointee and representative. Under announcements tonight, I want to remind everyone that the toy drive is ongoing, and it ends, Mr. Register, I believe, the end of this week, and you can drop your toys off at this building, and certainly encourage everybody to do that. This has been a great tradition in our community for a number of years to, you know, to collect toys and provide those for children who do not have this Christmas. Also want to remind everybody that daddy-daughter sign-ups are ongoing right now, and even though it is not Christmas yet or the new year, that event fills up fast and encourage everybody not to miss. This past week, we had the Super Seven here in Auburn, and I have been involved in that since its inception, and I just want to say thank you to so many people that participated in that. Our public safety men and women were outstanding, they made sure that we were taken care of and that people felt safe around the building, around the stadium, whether it was the fans or the fireworks or the buses or whatever was going on, our men and women had us taken care of, and I'm grateful for that. I even want to thank Judge McGoughlin, who helped keep our field clear of all riffraff and made sure that only the right people were on the field and where they were supposed to be, and I appreciate his efforts. Tourism, Auburn Athletics, Auburn University were great partners, as well as the City of Opelika was a partner financially, and just hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of volunteers, some of you are in this room, one of you is sitting next to me, and I just appreciate everybody that gave of their time, it was a great week, we had a great experience over there, great weather, and I'm very proud of Auburn High Girls, who were the state champions and won the second-ever girls' flag tag championship and won that in their hometown, and certainly proud of our boys' football team for participating. Since our last meeting, I participated in a community Thanksgiving service, which was awesome, and appreciate the invitation to be a part of that, and the holiday tree lighting on campus, a great community event that was attended by a lot of people that live in Auburn, not just that work on campus, so, great things. All right, anybody else have an announcement tonight?
Yes, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's been a while since we had a meeting, so I just want to thank, first of all, at my community ward meeting, I want to thank Dr. Harold and Dr. Young for conducting that meeting on Monday night, November 21st, and all the staff that was able to come out and participate and talk to the community about the new, the new health center that's been, that is now housed in Boykin. So that was a very productive meeting, and a lot of people got a chance to tour the building, and they got information about the new health center. So if they're listening now, I just want to send my thank you out for them, for even setting that up for the community, which we, I guess because it was the holidays, there wasn't a lot of people, so we're going to do it again, so that people can actually come out again and do the same thing. Also, following that event that Tuesday night, we, the Northwest Auburn Task Force and other members of the community, also gave the senior citizen, disabled and homeless Thanksgiving dinner. Dr. Harold was able to come back and she helped serve, I invited her back to eat, but she said she didn't want to eat, she wanted to help serve, so, and she enjoyed herself, and I want to also thank Al Davis and his staff for setting, setting up everything and putting out all their chairs and all their tables that they could, and we still didn't have enough room. So this year it was a success, there was a lot of people there, and, and I guess I was really touched and impressed by so many homeless people that actually came out. I didn't realize there were so many homeless people here in Auburn, but that was, we had a good number of homeless people that showed their faces and came out and enjoyed the festivities. We played bingo, we had, actually, I think we had a bingo winner in the room tonight. And, but it was really, it was really touching to see so many people that, you know, was happy to get a meal, and if I had to do it all over again, I think I probably would try to do it every week, but I also want to thank those who participated and those who donated food. We had a lot, lots, lots of food, and so it was able to accommodate everybody that came out. We didn't have enough chairs, but Al did his best to make sure that we had chairs. I also want to thank, thank our children, our scouts, WAFAPs and MATCH, because they served the senior citizens, and so they come out, and so we had, they had to give up their chairs for some of the guests, but everything worked out just well, just good. And I also want to say that my WAFAPs and MATCH, which is a scout troop, and those kids run anywhere from the ages of five to 15 years old, and they was in the Christmas parade. So if anybody was at the Christmas parade, we were directly behind the band. We had all those balloons, green and red balloons, and the kids just had a good time, and they really enjoyed theirself, and if I had to do that all over again, I think I'd do it this Saturday.
Thank you, Connie.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the council have an announcement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Every once in a while, I got a question about how things work and how we operate, particularly about how sometimes we seem like we breeze through a lot of agenda items and whatnot. I just want to remind the public that, that we as councilmen get a packet of information ahead of time, so we, we don't just, you know, just quickly decide on something here at the, at a council meeting, but I'd like to also point out that the same exact packet is available to all of the public ahead of time, so that you have the same information that we have here at, at our podium. It's available through the, the city website, or you can request that it be emailed, you know, you get a notification of it through the e-notifier. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, that, that we seriously consider each and every item, even if it's on the consent agenda, but all that information is out there, available for any and everybody to take a look at.
That's a great reminder, Kelly, and making a good rule of thumb, is this information generally available to the public on Fridays?
Friday afternoon should be posted by 5:00 PM once in a while, it could be a little bit later if we have a large agenda, but usually around 5:00 PM, www.auburnalabama.org/agenda.
Good, and we have a work session at 4:00 on Thursdays where we go through the agenda and get our first look at the agenda at that point in time.
Thursdays prior, and your work session is a public meeting. We don't record them because they're just a work session, but that is open to the public, and that is a preview of the agenda, which is subject to change between Thursday and Friday, and often does.
Sure. And I think it's worth mentioning, now that Mr. Griswold brought this up, is that we, a consent agenda was created four years ago when the previous council was brought, brought in, and it was, the whole heart of the matter was to give the public more opportunities to speak, and so we tried to take some of our decisions and consolidate those, so that we provided more opportunities for the public to speak to the city council. That was the primary, primary reason we did that. So, anyway, thank you, Kelly, for bringing that up, everything's always available to you, and we encourage you to, to go find it, if that's, if you've got questions, and then follow up with your council member or anybody on the staff. All right, anyone else have an announcement, anything? Okay, we'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications.
Hi, everyone, pretty short report from me this week, because the biggest thing that we have going on this week is finals. If you have a college student in your life, please wish them good luck, I know they would appreciate it, but that will lead us right into commencement ceremonies this weekend, and then a few weeks of winter break, so as I always say, do enjoy the quiet around here without us. And then going off of that, too, since we'll be gone, please help make up for the noise at the men's and women's basketball games, because we know we depend on our home court advantage in the arena a lot, so help fill in for us. Classes start back on the 11th, so we'll start trickling back in once the new year starts, but that's all, on that note, second, our women's volleyball team just finished a historic season, they made it to the NCAA tournament for only the second time in program history, and their most recent appearance before this one was 12 years ago, so we're very excited about the direction of the program and what this means for those young women as they continue to succeed both within the program and then in their futures beyond. And then lastly, the Jewel Collins Smith Museum of Fine Art was accredited by the American Alliance of Museums, which is the organization that acknowledges the highest standards in the museum profession. I think the last time we were accredited was 2003, so this is a big deal and really speaks to the quality of our museum, but that is all from me this week, we're regal.
Thank you, Libby, good luck on finals. Certainly graduation is a great time of celebration for those students and their families, but it's also a great time of economics for our communities, those families come back and spend a great deal of time with us, and being close to Christmas, it's, it's a very fruitful time for our businesses and restaurants, so we're excited about this weekend. All right, now it's time for Citizens Communications on items on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak to the council about anything that is on our agenda tonight, please come forward. If that item has a public hearing, we'd like to ask that you wait at that time to speak to us on the item that has the public hearing. Yes, sir.
Been a long time since I graduated from college, like some of you. My name is Robert Wilkins, 261 Ditsen Drive, Auburn, mayor and council, it's great to see y'all again. I heard that it may be postponed, but I think it's very important that I continue on dealing with the vote on the business license ordinance. I believe a no, no vote on that should be done, no extension should be done. The city, city manager, city government job has developed lots of rules, laws and resolutions that presented before the council, but the mayor and the city employees are responsible to present all the data and information about things brought before the council. The city perception by citizens is that this city is not preced, presending, preceding the council, can't even read my own writing, not presenting the council all the information needed to make a proper decision. I know he mentioned the big packet, and I, I get those packets now. Perception can be a reality. Second group is the Auburn constituents and Auburn businesses. They want limited law and regulations for stable businesses and families. The third group is you, the council, there's nine of you. You have a, a lot of responsibilities, because you go between we, the citizens, and the city to, to make things happen, and I hope you don't forget that responsibility. This council has given the proper data to decide the fate of this ordinance. A lot of constituents I talked to say, no, you're not getting the proper information. I got some different questions, I was going to label each person, but I'm not going to do that this time, just to say, please find the answer to this. First one is, should the city be allowed to burden its business owners, because Auburn is the only top 10 city in Alabama, not to have a similar ordinance, while shifting the burden of proof from the City of Auburn to the Auburn businesses? When did Auburn become a follower instead of a leader? How has each councilman, has each councilman been given nine copies, nine copies, have been given copies of all the nine ordinance in Alabama and a summary of them? Have y'all gotten those? You should have. How many businesses have you and other councils contacted in the wards to ask their opinion and their feedback? I think it's very important. Auburn city manager, back on October the 18th this year at Auburn City Council meeting, she said Opelika has had this in effect since 2007. In the local area, I do not know how often Opelika has invoked this, but I do not recall a time I read an article in the newspaper about it, so I think it's in extreme rare circumstances that any city invokes this, but it's not a, but it's just a tool in the toolbox, and when and if, when necessary. Then why do we have it? I don't understand it. How many businesses have not paid their taxes in Auburn in the last 10 months? Two years, five years, is it one, three, 50, 100? I don't know. How many, how much money has been lost by the city? A thousand, 10,000, 100,000, a million? I mean, how much is it? We need some data. How many businesses license have not been, have, would have been revoked in the last 10 months if this ordinance had been enacted? Mayor, you had mentioned something I don't quite understand, you said philosophical positions dealing with this ordinance back on the October 18th. I know what the word means, but I don't understand it pertaining to this ordinance, maybe afterwards you can tell me a little bit. And also, shouldn't there be a task force to make up businesses to give proper input by those that are affected? Why do you need another ordinance? Can we not just amend Chapter 12 of the city code, even though I think it may not be possible, but I don't know? What, what in Chapter 12 is not working? Section 1219 deals with discontinuing businesses that don't pay their taxes. Why is this not currently working? Is this about taxation? Why has the city broadened the scope within the business license ordinance to be so encompassing? The phrase "public health, safety, and welfare of the citizen" is in that ordinance. This is, I thought this was about taxation, I'm not sure why we added that, we have plenty of that in other parts of the city code. This ordinance is way, way too broad, it's kind of like a couple that has, say, three businesses in Auburn, and they have three employees at each location, and one of those employees goes behind their building, and a police comes up and he's doing drugs, and that person is arrested, and that business can be shut down by this ordinance. Now, I know the city's going to say, well, we don't have no intention of doing that, but it's the law.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Who'll be next?
Good evening, my name is Meneo Anolds, 837 Andrew Court. I have, my business is called Doggy Dog Bay, I'm on the agenda. Logan gave me a brief, this is my first time, so I'm a little nervous, but he asked me if I had, to ask city council if they had any questions about my application or any of that nature. I'd just like to say thanks for the opportunity to be downtown, to sell hot dogs and sausages and anything, like cold drinks and stuff for the citizens and college students downtown, so. It's for the address on Gay Street, 125 Gay Street. Mr. Sonny, he, he went to my cart one time, I'm over on Ace Hardware on University during the week. Yeah, I just wanted to come up, see if you had any questions.
Does anyone on the council have any comments or questions?
We did inquire about your business at our packet meeting last week, and it sounds great, and I think, can't speak for everybody, but I'm excited about this, about your project.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
It was mighty good.
Thank you, thank you. I was, I was like, well, I hope I get to see him and ask him how the hot dog was that day he came, and we talked for a few minutes, and it was lovely. I love serving the people of Auburn. I really want to get downtown to be, I want to have my cart to be a safe place for college students to come at night, where they be like, you know, they be all loony a little bit, and, you know, I just want to have a space where they be.
Looney's a great word.
Yeah, like safe, and, you know, just to, if the Uber come, you know, sometimes they get in the Uber, it'd be the wrong Uber, they don't know where the Uber is or their friend, you know, I just wanted to be down there, just to, you know, just be a safe person for everybody.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, why, why are you just limiting it to that one location?
Well, see, with the rules, all the sidewalks have to be 10 feet and 200 feet away from a restaurant, so it's not a lot of places I can be downtown, so unfortunately, the place that I'm, on Gay Street, I can only be there after 6:00, because there's the restaurant across the street. I wanted to be over there on South College, near the bookstore, J&amp;M, that little piece of sidewalk, it's like 10 feet, but Logan was like, the neighbors might be a little upset, because it's a high-rise where people live at, sort of near there, so, that was the only other place, and it's not really too many places downtown that have 10-feet walkway. So, it's sort of hard to be downtown, I should say, without it being interfering with other rules and stuff.
Thank you.
But if I could be somewhere else, I would gladly be there.
Okay, I look forward to it, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you still, your proposed hours are Monday through Friday, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM? Are there's just, you're going to just test the waters to see how it works?
Yeah, just to test the waters, just to see how it is, probably, I don't know, I'm just want to test it out, just to see how it goes.
Will you still stay over at Ace?
I still at Ace.
On the weekends?
No, just during, during the week, like, like 11:00 or 4:00.
Okay.
In the daytime.
So you'll change your location depending on your workday?
Yes, sir. I'll us, I usually post it on social media, so, hope you guys can come by and get a hot dog or a sausage, or connect a sausage.
I certainly admire your willingness to be in business, and thank you for making an investment in Auburn, and I look forward to sharing a hot dog with you soon.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. A few quick things, the, her ability to be at Ace is regulated by a different section of the zoning ordinance, much, much easier, there's a lot of hoops to jump through downtown with regard, food trucks are not allowed, but push carts are, and she has worked diligently with staff for several months trying to find a spot. The Gay Street parking lot location meets all the criteria, there's elbow room there, it's not near restaurants, it's not, not calling out, but across the street in the Auburn Bank Building, there's a coffee shop that closes at 6:00, and that's, that's why, why the hours can't begin until then, based on how the ordinance was originally written, there isn't a waiver provision, provision as such, so she's really worked diligently with us, and it was important to staff to find a location that had pedestrian activity, but yet met all the criteria and measuring distances per the ordinance.
All right, we're still in Citizens Communications on items on tonight's agenda, anyone else like to speak to the council regarding that? Okay, we'll move ahead, city manager's communications.
All right, I'd like to announce three vacancies on the Board of Zoning Adjustment. There are two regular positions and one supernumerary position. The three-year terms begin January 1st, 2023, and end January 20th, 2026. If you're ready for the consent agenda, does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, I'd like to remove 8E1, that's 8 Echo 1, please.
8E1, all right, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to remove 8 Echo 4.
All right, 8E4, anyone else? Okay, Ms. City Manager, 8E1.
Item 8E1 authorized. Item eight E one authorizes Amendment one to Task Order thirty-one, Auburn University Sub Basin F Y twenty-two sanitary sewer system evaluation survey with barge design solutions in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second. Mr. Griswold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During our packet meeting, we mentioned that the original agreement included some funding from Auburn University, and I've since learned that that's not the case. But I was curious as to the university's contribution to, to this amendment and to any follow-on activity that is generated by this study.
Absolutely, and I had told you at your packet meeting Auburn University's contributing, and that's a follow-on to what will eventually be an operation and maintenance agreement. I'm going to explain in city manager speak before our Water Resource Management Director explains a little bit deeper. But at the end of the day, a number of major city sewer lines run right through the middle of Auburn University's campus, and at this time, we don't, we have responsibility through the Alabama Department of Environmental Management to maintain them. But Auburn University has been also maintaining them over the years, and we're working together jointly to evaluate all the lines, see what condition they're in, any maintenance that needs to be performed. And ultimately, we, we actually don't have easements from Auburn University, and we're striving to get those so that we have the right. I think for our citizens, they don't understand Auburn University is its own state entity in our city limits, and we don't necessarily, unless we do by contract, have rights to enter Auburn University's property to perform certain services. So everybody's collaborating and working together, but financial contributions will come at the time of operation and maintenance agreement, and I'll have Eric add on to that.
You did a great job explaining that. Yeah, this SSES project is no different than any other SSES project in the city. They are city sewer mains. It's just that it's been a long time since the sewer main. These sewer mains have been evaluated, and with the growth occurring in Auburn, I just felt it was an appropriate time to go ahead and push this and make sure there's no problems. We have sewer mains that run under buildings, that run under Sugardome Stadium. We need to make, we need to check the condition of those, make sure we have contingency plans if something were to happen. Anything we see in this survey, we will address with Auburn as part of a maintenance agreement, and they will have skin in the game in trying to repair these lines. And I do know that they already have some projects lined up where they're planning on lining some of the existing sewer mains already that they've committed funds to. So this is, the only reason we're back to you tonight is that during the first phase of this survey, we've encountered some areas that needed some heavy cleaning. We were not able to get our cameras through there, so we're having to re-mob, do some heavy cleaning to get the debris out of the lines, and then we'll go back and TV. Also, a couple of the manholes that we had to inspect in sewer lines were under some of the football practice fields, and they didn't want us digging that up during the football season. So appreciate you, you know, asking these questions, but if you have any more, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. That satisfies me. Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eighty-four authorizes a design contract with McMullen, Pazin Smith, L L C. for the Auburn Public Library Public Restroom A D A Improvements Project in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second. Mr. Mormon?
Yes, this is for design services only, but I understand that construction on this project is expected to begin sometime this summer and will be extensive and expensive. I believe it will encompass four restrooms, two for the boys and two for the girls. And since we're in the design phase of this project, I wanted to ask if the library expects to continue in operation during this construction in light of the possible concrete removal and other demolition.
Absolutely. I'll have Tyler Witt, our library director, interrupt me if I misstep, but that's part of the design, is we'll make a plan for what we have to take out of service. We're also looking at totally revamping these restrooms. We may come back to you with a slightly different plan. And a lot of our buildings to make all individual, it, it's a room, for every toilet will have its own room, and it'll be a common sink area, and there may be no gender preference so that it's just individual unisex bathrooms. And so we may make a total shift with these and completely gut and replace the bathrooms entirely.
Hmm. I wondered if the construction could be done in a staggered fashion so that restrooms would be available for males and females independently, without both sexes having to share a single restroom.
That's what I'm saying is, as part of the design process, we'll be working through all of those things. We don't have the ability to shut this main branch down because it, it could be months, so we'll have to shift. We may bring restroom trailers in. Yes, there'll be male and female bathrooms, but we're also looking at other designs to accommodate families, you know, parents with small children, at different designs that really help facilitate, you know, for, for what we're, we're encountering today versus when the library is built, and particularly for A D A access. Regardless, we have to get into the slab to rip out plumbing and rebuild it. And so we will and have to by code if we're gonna remain open. We have to have enough restrooms and accommodate A D A requirements throughout the entirety of construction, and that's part of what we'll deal with.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
It moves.
Have a motion in a second. Any other further questions or comments? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has passed.
Under ordinances, item nine A amends Chapter twelve of city code to add a provision that establishes a process for revocation of a business license and sets forth the circumstances under which a business license may be revoked. This item was postponed from November first. A public hearing is recommended.
I move to postpone this until January the seventeenth.
Second.
I have a motion in second to postpone this to January seventeenth. Sure, I was gonna, I was gonna explain. City managers put a memo in our book. I would encourage the council to move forward tonight with a plan of having an information gathering session at our next committee of the whole where the staff can present their reasoning behind this potential ordinance and for the council to be able to ask the questions that they need to ask. And then this would put the decision ultimately a month past that. I do know that there's been a number of meetings with businesses that have occurred recently in the last few weeks, as well as conversations with citizens. I do believe the council is in a position where they, they need some more information and need to have an opportunity to ask some more questions and hear from some more citizens. And so this would give us, I believe, plenty of time to do all of that. So we would have a committee of the whole committed dedicated time to go through a presentation from the staff, and then this would be a decision we'd make approximately a month later. Correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, Ms. Witt, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Well, you covered my question about a work session or, or just a presentation to be able to answer in-depth questions. And we did receive quite a few details to frequently ask questions that are in this packet that is available to the public. So I recommend that business stakeholders dive into those and be, you know, be available to send us questions if they have additional ones that we can ask during that presentation.
I think, if I may, one important thing to note is, city council members have no idea who's paid taxes and who's not because that's confidential, and we are not allowed by state law to divulge that. So you're put in a unique position that you would not have daily awareness. That's an operational item that only is, is handled and directed by the staff, and it would be a violation of state law as to otherwise. If we were to go down a path, either way, there's what's being proposed here and a, and a different path, which is we have to take people to court to get money. This is about collection of taxes. But I want everybody to understand that you can't call me and say, is X Y Z business, have they paid their taxes? I can't tell you, I can't provide that information. It's confidential. So that's why also the council members may not have daily information about what's going on with paid taxes. I can tell you cumulatively, or I can tell you three businesses owe several hundred thousand dollars combined, or I can tell you those things, but I can't tell you names or types of businesses or anything else. And that's part of the puzzle that the council encounters when we work through these things. So, but we'll be ready in the work session. I feel these meetings have been productive. The frequently asked questions provided to you is a hundred percent based on questions we have received to date in those meetings, and they have been very helpful and productive with the businesses and, and Chamber of Commerce meeting with to better understand what questions are out there. We're here to answer questions, and we're definitely here to be supportive of business, but we're also here to level the playing field. Businesses are paying their taxes and they're in operation. I'm talking about, out of seventy-one hundred right now, we're talking about three businesses out of seventy-one hundred that we're having a consistent challenge with. So those are some of the things we'll go over at the Committee of the Whole to give you more information. I want to be sure, bring your questions. We would love nothing more than to answer them.
Do you anticipate between now and January seventeenth, since business license renewals are kind of in that timeframe, that we would see a request to take action against any individual business?
No, we have been, we are ready right now. We actually had three when we started this process in October. Now there are two. And depending on what you choose about this ordinance, i- if you don't proceed with this ordinance, we will come to you and ask to take two businesses to court immediately as we need to. They're, they're not paying us, and they are allowed to continue to do business along with everybody else who is paying their taxes. And they're collecting taxes, but they're not remitting them to the city.
Any other questions for the city manager? Comments? Okay, I jumped right out there and asked to postpone this till January seventeenth. I'm not sure, Ms. Crouch, was I out of order?
No, you're fine. And you got a second, I believe, from Councilman Parsons.
Okay.
Is that correct? Yep.
Okay.
So you're having discussion, and then that's up to you guys from there.
So this would just be a voice vote? We don't?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. So all in favor of postponing this until January seventeenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Okay, one aye.
All right, item nine B authorizes a city sales tax exemption for specified items as part of the severe weather preparedness sales tax holiday that runs from Friday, February twenty-fourth through Sunday, February twenty-sixth. Unanimous consent is necessary.
Introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion in seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing here, none of any comments or questions? Okay, this has been going on for a number of years. I believe ultimately there'll be a list of information out there that normally the state puts out, the, the types of purchases you can make and save on the sales tax. Okay. Lindsay with the roll call.
Adams?
Yes.
Oblent?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Norman?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mitten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Mayor, while it's out of order, I would like to remind our mobile push cart, doggy dog cart, that that was approved as part of the consent agenda because it wasn't called out individually, so I just want to make sure you knew you were approved. Okay.
Congratulations.
All right, moving forward, in ordinances, item nine C amends the two thousand and twenty National Electrical Code and two thousand and twenty-one International Residential Code to remove newly created standards that the city of Auburn had planned to implement in January of two thousand and twenty-three. Those standards required outdoor heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, also known as H V A C, equipment to have a ground fault interrupter disconnect, the G F C I, the little trip plug. This requirement has been reported nationwide to cause many issues. Therefore, we are recommending that the requirement be removed. Your action tonight, depending on what you do, would remove the requirement. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing or hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
I'd just like to clarify, if we vote yes, that means to remove?
Absolutely. When you, you implemented this code, we actually asked for a delay of implementation to January of two thousand and twenty-three to learn more about how implementation would go. So I think sometimes people think the council adopts or staff recommends carte blanche, and we don't. We had concerns about this out of the gate, and now our chief building official has learned, our building official has learned, there's a lot of issues with this, so we don't want to proceed with implementation in January two thousand and twenty-three. We want to walk away from this, and they are rewriting the code, as a matter of fact. So yeah, it's our strong recommendation that you approve this.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Lindsay?
Oblent?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Norman?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mitten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Under resolutions, item ten A authorizes a one-year extension of a noneducational ad valorem in sales and use tax abatement for General Electric Company doing business as G E Aviation located at twenty-four hundred, twenty-four hundred Innovation Drive in Auburn Technology Park West.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any comments or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten B authorizes the fixing of costs for cutting grass and weed abatement at nine-two-three Holmes Avenue. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten C one is a request from Tim Minor on behalf of Takala LLC for conditional use approval of a road service use fast food restaurant with drive-through known as Seven Brew Coffee to be located at sixteen-twenty-five East University Drive in the Comprehensive Development District zoning district. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its November tenth meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Zaka? All right, have a motion in a second. This time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
I have one question. I, I drove over there and looked at it, and I understand, I think, that Snow Biz is still gonna operate. I just didn't see exactly where this thing's going, but.
Snow Biz is, is sitting in kind of like a, a grassy area that's got curbing and so on. This would be directly in front of it if you're standing in Snow Biz in the parking lot. Correct? Mr. Foot?
Yes.
So just a little drive-up coffee place, and, and they both can coexist there.
Okay.
Probably will get good business from each other.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten C two is a request from Matt Cobb of Cobb Engineering for conditional use approval for a performance residential development, a multi-unit development located at seven-six-two North Donahue Drive in the Development District Housing Zoning District. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its November tenth meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. This time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
So when people hear multi-unit developments, they kind of pause, and I just want to ask that these are, these act more as, almost like townhomes?
They look exactly like townhomes, but they're on a single lot of record. And so, that is why they're called a multi-unit development.
And there's a total of 18?
18 beds.
Beds?
Yes.
Of this project?
Okay. But it's not being called, you know, anything. It would have a private dormitory designation or a academic dwelling unit if it were deemed as such. So, it's being deemed as straight-up multi-unit development. Correct? Director Foot, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10C3 is a request from Tim Minor on behalf of Takala LLC for amended conditional use approval of a road service use fast food restaurant with drive-through known as Taco Bell to remove engineering condition number two from the conditional use, which was approved by the city council on September 30th. This project is located at 1521 East University Drive, near Seven Brew Coffee, in the Comprehensive Development District zoning district. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its November 10th meeting. A public hearing is required.
May for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in second. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
The staff previously recommended this, this additional condition. Can somebody explain what's changed and, and the rationale behind agreeing to withdraw this, this condition?
Well, it's, when it's a condition, it's a must. And when it goes to a staff recommendation and something to be looked at the development review process, it's, it's a request. So, what happens is, if you look in your packets, you've got a drawing, and I'm, I have Brian Wood, who our city engineer is out this evening, but Brian Wood is, is our engineering division manager and can explain further if I get off course here. But ultimately, when you enter a driveway off of Glen Avenue right now at this shopping center, there's a car wash to your right, and there's a cross-access driveway that goes to the bank at the hard corner. This requirement required a certain distance from Glen Avenue before you could enter the Taco Bell property. If you invoke that and make it a must, then somebody wanting to go to the bank will have to go up the main driveway, turn and go around the Taco Bell building and toward the bank. And so, this is something where staff is, wants to just change it to more of a comment than a condition. The applicant is requesting it be removed, and it's something that will continue to be discussed as part of the development review team process.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. At this time, we'll open Citizens Open Forum. This year, an opportunity to speak to the council about anything that might be on your mind. I'll remind you, you have three minutes to do that, and please give us your name and address for the record.
Well, it's, it's cool to be up here again twice in one day. Just love y'all, all y'all. So, it's cool to have. I, I wanted to mention a couple of things. I realize that there's some legal issues, you know, dealing with getting the information. But once you do a lawsuit, can you not get information that's available for everybody? Is that not correct? Is that?
We can take that question up later. Is that a question you'd like for us to answer?
Yes, if you would mind. I'm trying to read my writing because I wrote a bunch of stuff. I, I don't, I don't understand. If it's dealing with taxes, then why is the ordinance so broad? Can it not just specify the taxes? If that's your concern, let's, let's do that. If you've got three small businesses, three large, I don't know what size they are. But anyway, I like everybody to pay their taxes. I think everybody wants them to do that. So, I don't have any problem with that. Something I want to talk about too is the TV screens. I've mentioned before, y'all never put anything up there anymore. You still haven't. Please use these screens for, for the abatement. You have some things in the packets. Put them up there. It's a lot prettier than, I'm sorry, the Auburn logo seen at all times. I feel like I'm, I'm kind of in a daze. Also, I wanted to talk about something I haven't talked about in a few times. The council has lost two members that voted for this ordinance, 3288, and one, of course, had to abstain, and that person's no longer with us. Six families now no longer are in our community. They had to sell their homes to satisfy this council by following the law that you approved while stripping their property rights, the constitutional rights, and their civil liberties. The short-term rental 3288 is the most ill-conceived law in Alabama, in Auburn. It allows some areas to have short-term rentals while others cannot, while missing, while misusing the zoning laws. In the last 21 months, nothing has changed in those communities. There was no problem before. There's no problem now in the sense of noise, okay? There's no traffic problems then. There's no traffic problems now. There's no trash problems now, and there was no trash problems then. So, I don't quite understand what this ordinance was for. Over the next few months, I will cover more, some misunderstandings. Let me, let me explain one of them. Some of the citizens, I remember, said that they were, for the ordinance, that stated that the value of their property would be devalued, but they're 100% wrong. All the material I've read and probably 100 different articles about short-term rentals, all of them increased. The biggest concern is their, their property increases too fast. They don't like that, okay? But in this town, they said it would decrease, would it would not, because it doesn't have any of those stipulation of trash and, and looking certain different ways. Well, I guess I got to finish. 31 days for short-term rentals, that's 11 people that you would have.
Thank you, sir.
We'll be next.
Hi, folks. I'm Steve Cosgrove. 1927 Watercrest Drive in Ashton, Ashton Park at North Lakes, I think is officially called. But I'm really, it's amazing how, how you all get all this done. You do it twice a month. I think it's just amazing. I really do. I don't know how you, the diligence and the thoroughness and the time and the effort and the conscientiousness of doing this, it's just amazing. I really appreciate it. I really, really do. Honorable Mayor, council members, city manager, dignitaries, and all. Several things. Since the last, last meeting, the State of the City address, I really enjoyed that. It's the second one I've been to. I have no idea, Ron, I've, you know, I've been, you know, delivered quite a few presentations and so forth, but I have no idea the content and the, and the precision and the comprehensiveness of that presentation is just amazing. He spent a lot of time on that, and there was a lot of input from a lot of people on that. I know that. But I really, really enjoyed that. The lamplighter recognition, I don't call it an award. I call it a recognition. It was just, it's just spectacular. The family members of those recognized, it's, it's indescribable how proud that they were and, and how proud they are. Some of them are getting up there in age, and I've used the expression before, no one is promised tomorrow. And it really, really does apply to, I think, to the, to the citizens that have contributed so much to this fine village that we call us, Auburn. And it's really, that's just a brilliant, brilliant thing to do, to tie that in. And most of them have no idea that that's, that that's coming and so forth. And you got a lot of input from a lot of people. And one, one awardee that in, in particular that I take a lot of pride in is somebody who's worked closely with, with Chief Paul Register, worked closely with Chief Tommy Dawson, and Chief Frank DeGraffenreid, and now, and Chief Cedric Anderson, and that was John Lockhart. And I got to know John, and I got to coach his son way back when, like in 1994, somewhere in there. And he had never played baseball before. That was just a really, really neat thing, because I didn't ruin him too much. But it was, it was a great friendship and so forth. Just really proud of that and proud of that, that initiative. The Super Seven, outstanding job again. I know you worked your tail off. You were exhausted the next day I saw that. The Christmas parade Sunday, it was really, really neat. And then lastly, Felt Little Park Initiative is coming together.
Thank you, Mr. Cosgrove.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
I'll get out of my way.
We'll be next.
Mayor Anders, ladies and gentlemen. The council, Herbert Walter Denmark Jr., 412 Lopelaka Road, apartment 111. The, when Mrs. Taylor referred to her comments this evening on the Thanksgiving dinner in bingo, she referred to me. I was one of the bingo players. But I came up here this evening to thank you all for proving from your consent agenda the item in reference to Auburn Public Library's public restrooms. I go to the library a lot, and I do use their restrooms. And I would, I'm thankful that you all are thinking of meeting your requirements of the ADA so that our senior citizens can be helped. I think it would be, it would be tremendous help later on. And I'm sure that the library people will let us know, you know, at the proper time, and so that everything will be right. I just wanted to express those concerns that it would, you know, that it would go along smoothly. I heard recently about an incident where a police officer used a taser to, to kill someone recently, and it's came to my attention just recently. If you all could look further into that, I would appreciate it very much. I, I don't know all the information, but, you know, as a person who's concerned about the relationship between law enforcement and citizens, I am very concerned about that. So, I didn't want to make a comment on that negative or positive because I don't have all the information, to be honest with you. But I just wanted to let you know that I'm concerned about that as a citizen. Thank you.
That was a pretty strong comment that he made, Ms. Crouch. What, I know that there's an investigation going on, and we're not at liberty to say anything as a council, but is there anything that could be clarified in what this gentleman just said?
I'll have our public safety director, Paul Register, answer.
Yes, Mayor, council members. As in any situation where law enforcement involved in an incident such as this, we call in the state of Alabama Law Enforcement Agency to investigate. That way, it's, it's an unbiased investigation done by a separate agency. They are in the process of doing that investigation now. And then after that, this information will be presented probably to the grand jury in Lee County. So, we'll wait for that information before we know anything further.
Who would be next?
Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
That's, that's the way it's commonly done, regardless of what happens.
Absolutely. That is standard operating procedure in Alabama. That an investigation is done, and that information presented to the grand jury. That is standard operating procedure. This is no different than any other situation. It would be similar to that. Thank you.
And Dr. Denmark, I believe the public safety director did release a public statement, a press release detailing the, the items of that, that releasable. And frankly, that is the same thing that we have received.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, is there a move to adjourn?
Real quick, we have a scout in the audience.
Oh, we do? Okay. We do have, we do have a scout with us tonight? Sure, you were in the back. I'm sorry. I didn't recognize you. Would you like to stand up, introduce yourself, and tell us what you're working on?
I'm doing the citizenship in Paradise.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for coming tonight. And if there's anything we can do to answer any questions for you or clarify anything we've gone over tonight, I think we'll all be available to you. Okay? All right. Good luck. Thank you, Ms. Whitten. All right, is there a move to adjourn?
Standby.
All right, we're adjourned.